There with that, welcome everyone to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, March 27. I'll remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded. It will be available for replay on the town's website within the next couple of days. Going to start by taking attendance. Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
Kasumi Humphreys.
Yeah.
And I'm Tom Lucy. Obviously, I am here. This point, I'm going to ask our board clerk to read the legal notice.
Sure thing, Mr. Chair. Consistent with the governor's orders, extended certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you don't have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number 1301-715-8592. Meeting ID 868-3921-0804, passcode 962713. Please use only dial in our computer, not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and all language assistance free of charge upon request if you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format. Or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Reynolds, town engineer at 781-246-6308 as far in advance of the event as possible. Any every effort will be made to grant your requests. Advance notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. Barrier for you, excuse me. One, continued hearings to 24-36, 24-37. Matthew F. Simes and Rachel W. Simes. Application for a termination and or find with respects to a continuation and extension of nonconforming uses under Article 9, Section 190-58 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. To construct in addition onto an existing single family dwelling, application for variance under Article 10, Section 190 dash 66 from the requirements of Article 6 and Table 2 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to a proposed addition onto a single family dwelling. The property is shown as map 23 lot parcel F1, F2 of the assessors map and is located at 73 Oak Street. Three, 24-38, 24-39, Gary Rasso. Application for determination and or fine with respects to an a continuation and extension of nonconforming uses under Article 9, Section 190-58 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw proposing to construct in addition onto an existing single family dwelling. Application for variance under Article 10, Section 190-66 and from the requirements of Section 190-22A1F of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to a proposed accessory apartment. The property is shown as map 33 lot parcel F14 of the assessors map and is located at Four Quail Run. Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. Much appreciated. With that, as we get to continued hearing, we've had a couple of continuances, so I will read those into the record, as is our practice up front. So if folks are here for those meetings, they can know that they no longer have to stay on on the Zoom call. First one, continued hearing 24-10, the residents at Nahat LLC. I'm in receipt from of a letter from Attorney Panos dated March 27th to the board. Dear Board of Appeals members of Wakefield Board of Appeals, scheduled to hear the above referenced matter on March 27th. After several weeks, we continue to wait for confirmation on the meeting of the town's traffic advisory committee to present review the Vanessa Associates Traffic Impact Study submitted on March 6, 2024 for the project. At the board's request, we continue to work on a redesign addressing height and massing concerns, which was initially presented to the board at its last hearing on March 13th. Also, we terminated our relationship with Hayes Engineering as of March 19th, 2024. We were onboarding a new engineering firm which will complete submissions to the town. As of yet, projects files have not been transferred to us from HEI. Accordingly, I respectfully request the matter to be continued. The board's next scheduled hearing on April 10th, 2024. Also, in accordance with 760 CMR 56.05, Section 3, the ZBA hearing shall not extend 180 days from the day of the opening of the hearing, except with written consent of the applicant. The time in which the board has to close its hearing was extended resulting from its safe harbor claim and accordingly was scheduled to close on May 24, 2024 as previously extended to June 7, 2024, and then again through June 6, 2024, as referenced in my correspondence to the board on February 28. The applicant agrees to extend the time in which the ZBA must close its hearings on the above matter through July 10, 2024, resulting in the from the applicant's 14 days continuance request hereof. Please accept this correspondence of the applicant's written consent to accordingly extend the 180 day period to July 10, 2024. Please note heads of take to contact me with any questions. Jason Panos. So with that, we're looking to continue this matter to April 10th and also accept the applicant's request and agreement to extend the 180 day period to July 10, 2024.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, quick question on this. Have you has, I assume the subcommittee has not met either.
No.
And then yes, he noted, Mr. Panos noted a few things in there, but I think, you know, I went back and watched the meeting today and he committed to be here, at least with timelines, which he isn't. I understand that TAC is one of those timelines, but there was other stuff he could have discussed. And also, I think he didn't mention in that letter, Chip has requested several times now information on the developer and the background of the developer, which he should have already. So I don't understand why he's not here with that. So although I appreciate the continuance and the request to extend the open hearing further two weeks, you know, I don't think we should take that as some sort of, you know, break or or, you know, he's working better with us. We're still missing information that we reasonably requested a long time ago that should be on hand already. We don't have it.
I couldn't agree more, Greg. Gail, if we can make a note in here, this is yet another instance where the we've asked for information. It's not being provided in a timely fashion. I'd like that recorded in the minutes. In addition, he did, you know, miss, we talked about having a schedule for tonight, even with the TAC matter not being nailed down. Mr. Tarbell at the last meeting said he should give us a couple of different schedules based on the TAC's meeting that it might not take place. So that's aggravating as well. But par for the course for this development team, not surprising. They haven't met one deadline. They haven't made one met one commitment that they've made to this board. So with that, back to the board. Any other questions or comments?
No, I just, again, my only other comment, Mr. Chair, is I find it interesting that they've terminated their relationship with Hayes instead of finding just a new engineer within Hayes. So just another indication, something's gone wrong there.
Yep, Mr. Feely pressed him on that at the last meeting and he was adamant that Hayes was their engineer too, so.
They just had to find another rep. Right, right. So we'll see. But again, it could could lead, you know, another firm means somebody else coming up to speed on where they've, you know, how they've gotten to this point and updating, you know, drawings and all that. So it could just add to delays, but we'll see. We'll have to see how it goes next time we meet.
We don't, we don't know where that ended up, right? They didn't, they haven't responded to you in a email, Tom, or anything about that?
In terms of the town, in terms of the engineer, Paulie's indicated here that he they terminated the relationship with Hayes. They said they have a new one and in a different sentence, he references a HEI. So he didn't make the connection that that's who they've hired, but I'm assuming that's who they hired because he referenced that firm. And again, the the letter's a little unclear on that.
Do we, do we know that firm is somebody that's worked in Wakefield and knows the engineering department?
I'm unfamiliar with them. I've never.
What was it again? A T I?
H as in Harry, E as in Edward, I as in Nigl.
Thank you.
And for the record, his his answer to where his engineer was, was that they were going to pick up where whoever was an engineer before, still at Hayes, left off and that he left the industry and is never going to be an engineer again. So that's a quote from him from that meeting. It's just, I think, I think we got the answer that we knew was there anyway.
Yeah, Mickey, working with that development team might drive you from the industry.
That might be true too.
But I also, in order to get a project eligibility letter, likely customarily, you would put some sort of bio of the development team in there. It should be something you should just be able to pass out or send along. Strange that it doesn't happen.
No, as I said at the last meeting, they they make a declarative statement in their application that they've assembled an experienced development team and we've asked them several times what their client has developed. We have not received a response to date. I was also showed today some language in 40B that talks about an applicant not providing timely information that can be reasonably accepted by the board. I'll be exploring that as well. We'll take a look at that. So. Any other comments, questions?
No, I I agree with everything that's been stated. Just need to keep on these guys. I mean, it's crazy. Never, never seen anything like this before.
All right. Going back to the vote then to continue and extend to the deadline to July 10. Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Matters continue to April 10. So those of you who are on here for that hearing, nothing more is going to happen tonight. They're scheduled to come back on April 10th, as you heard from the discussion with the board. We share your frustration if you're a neighbor not getting more information. And we'll certainly continue to press them for more as this moves forward. Next matter that will be continued 20 is case 24-20, 32 Nahat Street LLC. I'm in receipt of a letter from Attorney Haverty. Dear Mr. Chairman, this office represents 32 Nahat Street LLC, the applicant for a comprehensive permit on property located 32 Nahat Street, Wakefield, Mass. The applicant has submitted its traffic study to the board as requested but has not yet been able to meet with the traffic advisory committee. A meeting was originally scheduled for Friday 29th, but at the request of Lieutenant Anderson, this meeting is being pushed back perhaps to the following Friday, April 5. Nor to allow the applicant to compete its meeting, complete its meeting with the TAC. The applicant respectfully requests a two week extension to the board's hearing on April 10. Pursuant to this requested continuance, the applicant agrees to further extend the 180 day period for the board to close the public hearing until September 11, 2024. Signed, Attorney Haverty, and it is dated today. I can share with the board that I was on that email chain with Lieutenant Anderson. He is, he did request that they move the meeting from March 29th and he's trying to pull it together for April 5. So with that, any comments or questions on this application?
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter to the April 10, 2024 hearing and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for us to close the public hearing to September 11, 2024.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded. Any further discussions or questions?
Yeah, I just we seem to have, so this hasn't been as confrontational, but we seem to have less information from these guys than correct me if I'm going crazy or completely in the wrong. We've seen a lot less of this team than we have Mr. Panos's team. So yeah, a lot less confrontational. So it seems a little bit under the radar. But if I'm right, I don't think we should lose sight of that. It seems like they're kind of riding in the slipstream here, but not giving us sort of any information at all.
No, agreed. And they've just been continuing, waiting for their traffic study.
No, it's other stuff that they can present on too.
Right. And I think that they think they've got to pass because they've already reduced the density a bit. But.
Well, we gave them, we gave them more homework to do also. They could have came back with a change. So.
Agreed. We weren't done with density by a long shot, massive. So. With that though, any other comments or questions? I'm sorry, we're not taking any public comment at this moment. Hearing seeing none. On the motion, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. Matters continued in the it's extended until September 11th. 180 day periods extended to September 11, 2024. So folks that were here for the 32 Nahat Street, that will be, obviously, we're not going to discuss that further tonight. And we'll look forward to catching up with that development team with the questions that you heard as well as some information on the traffic at our April 10 hearing. So with that, next case up is 2434 Gary Rasso, Four Quail Run. Then use the chair's prerogative a little bit to, Mr. Rasso also has some matters under new hearings. I'm going to bring those up too, which are case 2438, 2439, also locate Four Quail Run. These are very straightforward applications, pretty consistent with the what we've been approving for accessory apartments. So I thought we could just pull this up and you know, I I don't really have any questions, but other board members might and members of the public might. So with that, I'm going to call those cases forward. Mr. McGrath, I believe your name's on the application.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrath, representing Gary Rasso and Karen Rasso, owners of the property at Four Quail Run. Mr. Rasso is is on the Zoom tonight. And thank you for consolidating those applications. We had filed for a special permit for the accessory apartment and then realized that there was some additional relief that was needed. So we applied at a later date. So now to have them consolidated makes sense because they're all related. So you had stated it, the 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 goal of the all of these applications is for the Rassos to add an accessory apartment to their single family dwelling at Four Quail Run. It does involve an addition, as has become somewhat typical in the rear of the dwelling. So I'll get into the site plan. So that is, you know, there's three applications involved here. The first is for a finding as it relates to the addition. The second is for a variance as it relates to the requirements of the accessory apartment, a couple of those requirements that we're not able to comply with. And then the third relates for the special permit for the for the accessory dwelling itself. So if I may, I'm going to start, I guess, by sharing my sharing the site plan and talking about the addition.
Yeah, please go ahead.
So this is a, this is a really, you know, big lot, Four Quail Run is a fairly new subdivision in Wakefield up in kind of near the high school farm street, the hot street area. And Four Quail Run, as you can see, is a 13,000 square foot lot. It has 188 feet of frontage. The the issue that we have, I'm going to go through the zoning table, but I'll point this out. You see how the rear lot line is only 75.66. So you can see the existing single family dwelling here with the addition protruding back to the rear lot line. And that's what creates the issue with our lot width. And that's the finding that we're we're looking to to deal with here. So if you can see, you can see the table. And I'll just go through that quickly. The lot area requirement is 12,000. As I mentioned, this is 13,246. So it complies currently. The frontage is required is 101,08.23. Lot width is 100, currently 89.2. And because the lot gets narrow, it's going to go down to 85. And that's why we need the finding because it is going to extend that nonconformity or intensify it. And we need the relief to find it. It's not substantially more detrimental. The front setback requirement is 20. That is not changing. It currently complies at 24.9. The side, again, 15 is required. Compliance is remains at 15.1. The right side compliance remains at 17. Rear yard setback, even with the addition, is not even close. The requirement is 25. It's currently 87 and change, and it's going down to 62 and a half. Lot coverage 30%, currently 11.4. That's going to comply at 18.8. Open space required is 40, currently 83. It's it's going to be 79, so easily complies. It's classified as two family dwelling, the way it sits. And it's going to stay that way. And then the height is going to be less than 35 feet required. So that's the first form of relief. If I may proceed, Mr. Chair, and then perhaps you could attack these all at once. Is that okay?
Yeah, please. That's what I intend to do.
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, Mr. McGrath, I think you said two, two family, it's single family, but two, two story.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for the correction. Yep, true story. Appreciate that, Mr. Hatfield. It is, it is a single family house.
For the record, yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So what we're seeking for variances, there's two components that are not met under the special permit requirement under 19022A1F2. As you know, the lot needs to meet the minimum lot area, which it does, but it also needs to meet the minimum lot width. And it does not. So the first is a finding to allow allow the addition. And the second is a variance from the requirements of the special permit requirement that accessory apartments be on lots that meet the minimum lot width. And the second is under 19022A1F7, the accessory apartment shall not involve an extension or enlargement of the principal dwelling. And and this is obviously not the case. We're actually putting an addition in for that. So that those are the two forms of the variance. And so this deals with the floor plan. You know, just to kind of go through this quickly on the floor plan, the the lower level is going to be a new garage out back. You're going to drive around the side to go in. And then also, it's going to include a first floor basement entry. So that's kind of like at the basement level. And then the second part of the addition is on the main floor. And that's where the accessory apartment is going to be in the addition. And the upper level of the house is not changing at all. There's no addition involved. So we don't have architectural elevations. I was hoping the board would would not have an issue with that because this is such a basic addition. And it's really, you know, two stories and it's it's going to have no impact. And I can show you that on on the Google Earth. There's there's a lot of separation between this property and the other properties, especially in the rear. So so as far as the square footage, we've done the calculations. If you, the engineer did not add these up, but if you add up the gross house, the the gross habitable area, including the accessory apartment, it is 30, 3863. And you get that by this, the single family gross habitable area is 3,088. And then the accessory dwelling is 855. So the total is 3863 with the accessory dwelling unit being 855. It's 22% of the habitable area. So it meets the requirement of your bylaw under 25% and it exceeds the minimum requirement of 300 feet. So we do not need a waiver from that requirement. I I can go through the other components. I respectfully ask if the board will waive that. I don't think you want to bore me with that. You're very familiar with those requirements. And I've highlighted the ones that we were not in compliance with. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Chair?
It is to me. Do I have any other questions? Like I said, this is pretty straightforward. It's not exacerbating any it's not creating any nonconformity. So for me, this is pretty straightforward, easy.
No, Mr. Chair, I just, I wanted to confirm the calculations and Attorney McGrath has done that. I saw the numbers on the drawings, but just wanted to be sure we it met the requirements in terms of square footage and the percentage, so.
And then promised, I just wanted to show you, I mean, this is a pretty significant lot with a lot of privacy out back. So where that addition is going to go, you can see how the driveway comes around. So that that's where the the new addition is going to serve as a garage at the lower level and then the accessory apartment on top of it. But there's plenty of room with no impacts really to anybody. I thought that would be helpful.
And Brian, what's the relationship that's going on?
So in the accessory apartment, the Rasso's daughter, Jillian, and her husband Caleb Worster are going to live in the accessory apartment. And Gary, Gary and Karen are going to live in the main dwelling, Mr. Tarbell.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mr. Rasso Seninwa is a professional baseball player in the major league, so he travels a lot. So this is going to be convenient for the daughter to be able to stay with him. He's always out of town most of the summer.
Great.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing seeing none from the board. I will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here for member, a member of the public that would wish to comment on these applications before the board? If so, please use the raised hand function and zoom. Hearing seeing none. Back to the board. Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I think we're looking for motions.
So, Mr. Chair, I will move that we grant a finding and determination pursuant to 19058, the bylaw. At the proposed, we need somebody muted. Okay, thanks. That the proposed changes and alterations at Four Quail Run based on the site plan from Paul Finocchio dated February 16, 2024, and the architectural drawings. While they will increase the existing nonconformity with respect to lot width at the on the lot, we find that those those changes that are proposed shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformities to the neighborhood.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded and discussion. Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the variance pursuant to 19066, Section 19066 of the bylaw. Based on the same plans as dated, that we vary the requirements of with respect to the lot width and the addition that's proposed as part of the accessory apartment owing to circumstances related to the lot and financial hardship to the petitioner, that the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning chapter. Yeah, I think there's a condition on the next one. On the special permit. Yep.
Seconded.
A motion's been made seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, same voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Mr. Chair, I grant, I move that we grant the special permit pursuant to 190 22AF one, no AF, sorry, AF. To grant the requested special accessory apartment owing to all the requirements have been met and satisfied per the testimony presented tonight for the accessory apartment. Based on the same plans as noted, with the condition that instead of a surety that the applicant provides a letter to the town annually stating that the intended purpose remains the same. And that is the motion.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded. Any comments, questions? Hearing seeing none, same voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. That is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck to Mr. Rasso. I think he dropped off the screen. Okay, moving on, new hearings, cases 2436, 2437, Matthew F. Simes and Rachel W. Simes. F. Symes and Rachel W. Symes for the property located at seventy-three Oak Street. I believe that's yours as well, Mr. McGrath.
It is, Mr. Chair, thank you. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrath representing Matthew Symes and Rachel Symes, the owners of seventy-three Oak Street. Um, this relates to a proposed addition to their single-family dwelling for their growing family needs. Um, and we, we've requested, um, a finding, any variance for this because the lot doesn't comply with the current requirements, and we're going to be creating a new non-conformity with a setback, uh, whi- which I believe is because of the unique circumstances related to the lot, which I would like to present to the board. Um, and I'm going to start with the site plan on this. Um, so to familiarize the board, this is on Oak Street in Greenwood, uh, if you're heading down to, um, uh, towards, uh, the high school or Old Mahout Road. Uh, from Greenwood, it's on your right-hand side at the intersection of Vels, of Vels Street. And right off the bat, you can see the uniqueness in the shape of this lot with the odd corner that comes around, the curving of Vels Street has two frontages on Oak Street and Vels Street. Um, the existing house, you can see it, uh, here, if you follow my cursor. Comes around with the porch and then cuts back. And the, um, the Symes is proposing an addition, which will include a garage and some living space above it. And, um, and basically, if you, if you look at the zoning table, the non-conformity uh, relates to the, the, um, the square footage of the lot. It's required to be twelve thousand in this district, it's only nine thousand eighty, and also the frontage uh, at, um, ninety-two, which would also be lot width. Uh, the front setback currently re, re, uh, complies, um, from uh, Oak Street, and we're going to continue to comply with the front setback on Oak Street, even with the addition, as you can see. Um, the side setback on this side, although it's fifteen feet, it is going to remain at fourteen point five. So that's another non-conformity of the lot, but there'll be no change. Um, the need for the variances on this side, on the Vels Street side, uh, even though it's classified as a um, side setback, uh, because it is, has a street, it's required to meet the front setback. So this actually meets the current zoning setback requirement of fifteen feet for a side yard. But because it's a street, it needs to be twenty, hence the need for the variance. Um, so that's our variance request. Uh, it's currently thirty-eight point five, it's going to go down to sixteen point five. Would need to be twenty because of the street setback, and we're requesting a variance there. Um, the rear setback is currently twenty-three point five, twenty-five is required, there's no issue with that, no change. And the, uh, maximum building coverage is thirty required, existing is seventeen point seven, we're going to continue compliance at twenty-six point two. And the minimum open area required is forty percent, we have sixty-eight, it will go to fifty-nine percent, um, with the addition. So that is the, um, um, you know, I think there's some unique circumstances here when you look at the shape of the lot, where the house is situated in the fact that it abuts two streets, which creates that deficiency on that side. We have some architectural elevations to share as well. The architect's done a pretty good job, I, I should say a really good job with this. This will kind of orient you a little bit, uh, I'm going to come back to this, but you'll notice how um, this, this faces Oak Street, so the garage is on, kind of on the inside. So this is the front of the house facing Oak, and this is the addition, and that's where the garage door will be, it will not be on the, on the Vels Street side. I'm going to kind of go right to the elevations, which I think are going to be helpful to you. So these are the existing conditions. Um, and the architect's really done a good job of labeling these, this is the current front elevation on Oak Street. This is the right elevation, which is the opposite side of Vels Street. So way on the other side where that fourteen and a half foot setback is. This is the rear elevation, opposite Oak, and this is the current Vels Street elevation, right here, on the, on the bottom right. And this shows the addition, which you already saw on the, um, on the site plan, which goes on the house, and that's the floor plan, that'll be the garage on the first floor, and then some family living addition, uh, up on the second floor. And then this is how the elevation, I think it's really tasteful. So this is now the front elevation from Oak is the addition, the garage doors are tucked in here on the side, so they'll pull in and be able to go into their front door. So this kind of gives you an idea of how those garage doors, this is a side opposite of Vels. This is the rear, and you can see the addition over here on, on the right side of the screen. And then this is the Vels Street side. Um, I'd, I'd also like to, um, add that, um, they have, um, received, uh, pretty significant support, um, from the neighbors, and I'll forward this to you, Mr. Chair. I also, Mr. Finocchio had a couple of typos on his plan, so I'm going to send that to you, we just corrected that in the zoning table. And I'll forward that to you and Gail.
Brian. It's Robert Glover.
Oh, my dad. Yeah, it was actually, I apologize, that's on the Rasso one, I'll forward you that plan. Thanks, Chip.
No problem, Brian.
So this is just the neighborhood support, all the director butters and the folks across the street on Vels. Don't have any issue. So you got one seventeen, one fourteen, uh, Greenwood, four, five, and nine Vels. And show you that. Second, wrong screen, apologize. Thanks for your patience. So they have the support of the folks in the back, and they also have four, which is right across the street, and five, which is right next door. So this is really the person that's going to be looking at the addition. Happy to answer your questions the board might have, Mr. Chair. So if you can just stop sharing so I can see, appreciate that. Uh, comments, questions, board members?
Uh, Brian, who's the architect? I saw the plans, but I didn't see, do we have a name?
You do.
I just didn't see it, or it's not on there.
It's Jenna Ellison.
Anyway, Chip, I mean, uh, Dave.
Yeah, it's not on any of the.
Yeah, she didn't label it, but we can reference that, i- 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 I'll get that put on, Mr. Hatfield.
But it's Jenna, you said Jenna Ellison?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you can just amend those, Brian, just, and send it to Gail.
Yeah, Madam Rachel, can you contact her and just have her put her name on the plans, please?
She should, I was going to say, I sound like Dick, but it, it's always nice when they're stamped.
Yeah, stop it.
Assuming they're happy with their work.
All right, a- a- any other comments or questions, board members, before I open it up to the public?
And Brian, you said the site plan is not changing, you were referring to.
No, I was wrong, Chip.
The other application, okay.
No, thank you.
Because I grabbed this one, but I just didn't know the architects, okay, thank you. But I have no problems, Mr. Chair, again, pretty straightforward and seems reasonable.
All right, uh, there's a couple folks still on that aren't us, uh, anyone here to comment on this application, if so, please do so by indicating your willingness to do so by raised hand function and zoom. Hearing seeing none, back to the board, pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the finding and determination pursuant to section one ninety fifty-eight, the bylaw. That the proposed reconstruction changes, extensions, and alterations at ninety-three Oak Street, based on the site plan from, prepared by J and B Survey dated February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and the architectural drawings from Jenna Ellison dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Although they increase s- some of the existing non-conforming natures of the structure and lot, uh, specifically lot area, lot width, side yard setback, and rear setback. We find that the proposed changes shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformities to the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. McGrath, good luck to the Symes, sorry if I mispronounced your name.
We need one more vote.
We need another.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the variance pursuant to one ninety sixty-six of the bylaw. Based on the same plans as noted above, um, that the changes proposed at ninety-three Oak Street uh, owing to circumstances related to the, uh, shape and topography of the, of the lot and land and structures. And a little enforcement of provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner at desirable relief, um, as requested with respect to uh, the, the front yard setback being sixteen point five feet instead of the required twenty. Um, maybe granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
Seconded.
Motion's been made, seconded, any comments, questions? Hearing seeing none, same voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that too is unanimous.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian. Now I can wish them good luck, all right.
Thank you.
Good luck, you.
Okay, moving on, uh, other matters. Anybody have anything they want to bring up?
I get a couple things.
Yep, fire away.
Go, go ahead, Jim.
Well, number one, uh, bylaw review committee, we're meeting in another couple of weeks, um, and they want to go over that section six point three performance standards. I sent you guys, everyone, an email a couple of months back, I don't know if you want to, I can resend it. If you have any comments, it's, it's a newer section that we put in there, um, if you want to. I know, I sent it, I sent it January tenth, but I'll, I'll resend it. Um, it's basically part of the email of rough draft one that was put together, but you just got to scroll down to section six point three, but I'll, I'll, I'll mention that in the email.
And what is six point three?
It's going to be the new section, performance standards.
Can you summarize what that means to us?
Yeah, hold on, I'm going, I, I pulled it up, uh, performance standards, um, it's got a rules and regulations, exemptions, emergency response, lighting standards, uh, light trespass, light, uh, intensity, searchlights, indoor signs, height of fixtures, noise standards as part of it, hours of operation, it's a whole section, site development and standards, land disturbance, um, site design.
Okay.
Yeah, preservation of existing vegetation, uh, top-sail irrigation, pedestrian and vehicle access, curb cuts, so it's, uh, it's like five or six pages, maybe ten pages. Level of service of maintenance of uh, interest in sections, so.
For what, like, multi-family projects, or what is this specifically relate to?
Um, yeah.
Oh, it's right here on the purpose, non-residential and multi-family developments that require a special permit or site plan review.
Exactly.
It's all the stuff we normally go through anyway.
Yeah, but now that, now there's a whole sheet that, you know, there's a whole ten pages that, it's not just like what we're thinking, that what we're going to ask them off the top of our head, it's going to actually be part of the bylaw now.
We should look at it, though, my, my fear with the, that this effort is they're trying to you know, homogenize us with every other community around us, and we might not be on board with that, so uh, I'm going to encourage folks to take a look, uh, to, to make sure that it reflects what our standards are. And with this board, and, uh, which should happen for Wakefield, I'm not so concerned about what other communities do.
So Babaiski, he, he mentioned it, he talks about this like, like a sushi medj- uh, mess, uh, menu to pick and choose what you want, you don't have to use the whole thing, this is basically what Medford adopted a year, a year or so back that he just finished. So we can adopt the whole thing, you can take sections out, you can add sections, you don't, you know. So take a look at it, if you, if you, if there's a section you don't want, you think it's, you know, too much, you can take it right out, he'll, he, he's fine with whatever, you know.
It scares me a little bit that Medford accepted it because, don't we always hear, we don't want to be Malden or Medford?
Hey, I grew up in Medford, so watch, watch yourself.
You had to get out, Joe.
That, that, that was the point I was trying to make, though, that's why we really get to look at it, because it, it should be what we want, you know. Um, so, no, and it's, I'm glad you brought it up. Joe, it's, uh, it's great that you're following that, and, uh, appreciate your efforts, and thank you so much for bringing that up, so.
Okay, and also North Ave, um, Trilla was dropped off the other day, there, I'm going to be jumping on that in about three weeks, so, um, they're going to start, um, in certain piles on the land, and then, um, found, foundation work, and then framing, so hopefully you'll start seeing some action, the fence is up. Dana mentioned about putting signage on the, on the fencing, so I already gave him the heads up about signage. So he's going to obviously put the sa- the safety stuff.
A nice green fence, just like Bond did at the high school.
If you, well, it's green now, so if you've seen it now, it's, it's fenced and it's, it's got the, the green in front of it. He's going to put a, he's going to put his logo, Wakefield Associates in one spot, and he's going to put a picture of the building in another spot. And then, and then obviously, safety stuff is nothing that you can, you know, that's going to have to go.
Right.
So. I'll just, you know, I'll keep you, I'll keep you posted on that as time goes on, but you'll, you'll see it going up pretty soon.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, okay, anybody else?
I heard that the new development on Foundry, they've actually got one unit under agreement. There's, so they're starting to move on that one, I mean, it's been, still being constructed.
Before it's framed, like, just.
Well, they, they must have a rendering somewhere, and I, I, I've heard there's a few different um, configurations, um, you know, one and two bedroom, whatever they, um, but, um, but they've already got one under agreement, so it's moving, uh, clearly, and, uh, the other one on Water Street by Nacella Field is finally going vertical, which is happy to see. Happy to see that, it took a while to start getting vertical, but I'm glad to see it is.
That Foundry Street one, maybe it was you, Dave, so maybe I'm just recycling information, but someone told me there was like a waitlist of people trying to get in to get information about it, like I don't know, ninety people long or something like that. You know, it doesn't mean they're going to buy them, but at least interested. Lot of interest.
Yeah.
There aren't many, there are many condos that, that were located in town, so.
Yeah, no, the one across the street and this one were condoized, a lot of them are apartments and rentals, and that's we can't really dictate that, that's what the developers want, but these two were, projects have been condos, so. Um, and, um, still looking forward to hearing who the, the tenant will be in the restaurant space, but, uh, yeah, we'll see, but anyway, just want to pass that on.
So, so Brian, while you're on, um, speaking of projects, uh, I'm not a fan of this one, but, um, curious about Ten Broadway.
Yep, they're gearing up, I'm working with them on some building permit type issues.
Sorry, go ahead, Tom.
I was just going to say, it'd be good to get that one going, because we don't know what's going to happen on the hot street, so it'd be good not to have everything happening.
Do we know any more about the property next to Santander that? Had like a couple of pop-up businesses last summer, but.
Yep, I talked about, I can inform you, he's marketing.
Okay, but nothing confirmed yet.
No, he's he's particular.
Okay. No, no, we. We had a feeling it's right, Chip, we'd had a feeling it might linger for a while, or stay vacant. So we said, please landscape it a little bit. And last year it had some pop-up vendors and stuff, which is fine, but. I'm just curious if there's something more definitive happening, so. All right, looking forward to that as well.
And the old Santander, do we know that's going to start moving? That was a while ago, right? Maybe not. That we approved it?
In a few months anyways.
I can give you an update on that if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so. I actually got an email on this, I think it was last. Again, working through his building permits, he said yesterday at six twelve, he emailed me, hi Brian, yes, we are ready to submit by the end of April. I think you'll be well. Best regards, Bill.
Mickey, can you, I think it's Mickey, can you mute, because there's someone in the. Got like half what Brian said.
He sent me an email last night, Greg, he said, hi Brian, yes, we are ready to submit final building permit plans by the end.
Okay. Oh, nice, okay, great.
The other one, I'm curious about, did we ask CCNF? To come back every six months and give us an update as compared to a construction plan? Was it six months, a year, what did we ask them to do?
I see recall six months.
Six months, yeah, and that was back in August, I think the last time we talked.
I would have to say they're probably due to come back and give us a quick update, or through Brian, a quick update of what's going on.
We have a, we have a meeting with them that the Chair is going to participate in next week. We're starting to go through all of the conditions with. Chair Lucy and. Tom Mullin. Town administrator, town engineer. Just to make sure we're meeting all the requirements for the open space and. And easements and financial contributions and. Police station, Chief Scorer is going to be there, they've already designed that, so they want his input on what he wants in there. So he's going to participate in that meeting. So that's, that meeting is happening next week.
Great, so maybe update at our next meeting as to how that went, I'm fine if Tom just gives us that update.
Well, I can ask him to, and I'll see where they're at, because I haven't read out. All the conditions, but I do remember if they're getting ready to go vertical, we're supposed to see some. You know, mockups, so.
Well, they're supposed to have a mockup panel there.
Yeah, that's underway, so we'll get an update, Tom, when we meet next week with them on that stuff, that's why they kind of want to regroup with the. With the stakeholders in town on all the conditions, they don't want to have it, they really, they're very attentive, they. They called me and said, could you set this up, we don't want to, we don't want to have any hiccups or misses. And missed deadlines, and so we want to kind of, because they're looking, they're actually looking that, you know, there's some milestones that have to be reached before occupancy and. And they want to make sure that, you know, some of these. Covenants or easements that are going to have to be done, that they're done, you know, well in advance, not doing them at the last minute.
That makes sense. Okay. The other thing I was going to bring up is that in April. Our town council will be. Appointing. At this point, alternate members. And there's three, you know, obviously Kasumi's up. We have three other applications, two of which are very strong. So I'd like permission from the board to send a letter to. Town Council advocating for the two strong ones in Kasumi. To be the alternate members, the other one is. To be diplomatic, I don't think is a good fit for the board. So.
Have we seen all the resumes, Tom?
What?
Have we seen all the resumes or whatever, just so we we. I don't know the.
I don't recall if I sent those around, but Sherry did share them with me, I asked them for her, I'm happy to do that, I can circulate to the board.
Yeah, if you can, and then maybe at the next meeting, we. If if they haven't voted yet, we can certainly do that. Do you know when the vote is? When the appointment is, I think it's.
I will ask Sherry, she, you know, and she's giving me all the information, I don't have it in front of me. She gave me the deadline to send a letter, I know it's in April, so she's already done all her work, it's just I gotta. I gotta look at that email again, send you guys the resumes, but. It'll be obvious when I send the resumes around what I'm talking about, so.
Yeah, no, as long as there's enough time for you to send them to us and for us to. You know, give you the go-ahead by the tenth, and there's still time to get that letter to them. Before they, that'd be, that'd be fine, if we have to do something sooner than. So be it, but yeah, if we have enough time. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thanks, we'll look for it.
Will do. Anything else?
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of our March thirteen twenty twenty four hearing. I think they were well done as usual.
Expertly prepared, for sure. We can do the voice vote here, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Mister Chair, I move to adjourn.
Oh, yeah.
Always in order, can do that by voice vote, too.
So. Everybody have a great Easter.